I set this up to be a public hearing, but there was a petition circulated which counteracts the resolution that we passed. So this is just a comment town hall meeting, so I can just give you guys information. Since it was already advertised, rather than putting a council on the door.
You say you're not going to have public input?
You can have public input. Okay. I'll just walk out if you just stand up.
Hold on, I'm just a United States American, I'm in the United States Constitution.
So do I.
Free right to open and petition my government.
Yep, so do I.
That's good.
Okay, this, what I handed out was the original resolution that we passed. And wanted to give you guys a look like information. Here's what other counties in the state do. This resolution that we have to have two public input, prior to the vote, by the commission to implement the resolution. But since this is going to be on the ballot, there's, the commission is not going to go forward with the resolution.
I see.
We legally can't go forward with it. It is basically stopped.
Oh, I...
It stopped what we had done, and we can't do anything until the election.
So, I guess that's a state attorney question, that we would, I mean, basically it stopped...
In the century code, we did the petition, and then we got enough votes. They can throw out the resolution, it was done. If they didn't do that, they rescinded it, but it was a tie vote. Go to the voters on the general election. And then they can, you know...
Because we had, we only had four commissioners in the last meeting, right?
Yes.
And it was tied?
It was tied, so any tie has to go to the next meeting on that one. For all of you that don't know me, I'm Gene Wolf, I'm the chairman of your commission. Travis Gray, he's a commissioner, you know, I think everyone knows him, Mr. Bowman, and we've got two Mr. Bowman's in here tonight. He claims I can know you.
Probably doesn't want to.
That kind of, that's how, that's how it happens. You guys want any of us?
Wouldn't hurt. Can I take, mention something on it?
I got some mess up here.
Oh, this goes with this. I may not have enough for everybody. I only printed out like 10 copies of some of them. Oh, okay, I know what that page is. That explains in the century code, the methods of accomplishing office...
11102.
Oh, now I don't want to get going on here. All right, some of you got page one, some of you got page two. All right, sorry about that. So if you got one, it says, I got page three, wouldn't change much. Sorry about that. You got the, on the discussion, all right. Yeah. Yeah, this is the century code 111024. All right, you got page, oh, just there, okay. Yes, it was tied vote, therefore you guys... No, you didn't, you still aren't. I got a couple more here, this is just the century code.
Yes, I guess the biggest question I have is, how is this going to help the quality of first accounting government?
Accountability.
How is that, accountability, what do you mean?
Right now, all your elected officials, including us three, and all five commissioners, we have no work schedule, we have no, we don't earn vacation, we don't earn sick leave. As your county commissioner, I do not have to show up for the rest of my term. You guys are going to pay me. Believe it or not, I asked a couple attorney, not the attorney general, a couple state's attorneys already, well, the AG office, they tell you to talk to your state's attorney. And I couldn't find in the century code, I'm an old union guy, so I wrote contracts, I looked for language, so I'm looking in the century code for language, because I want to know, how many meetings can I miss?
You should be free.
It might have been. So I said, how many meetings can I miss? At that time, our state's attorney was Jessica Binder, and she finally looked at me, she said, you missed all these. Really? I said, so, I don't have to show up for the next, well, at that time, I was still in a two-year term, now I got a four-year term. And she said, yeah, like she said, if you don't show up for any meetings, then you won't be reelected. I said, nah, nah. I said, I'll run again, I know I can reelected. It does not say in the century code that I can't run again, and that I won't be reelected. I go, I may get reelected and never show up. And your five commissioners, and also all other five of your elected officials are the same way. They don't, officials are your highest paid in the county. Now, there are a couple appointed positions that are higher paid, but typically, your state's attorney is your highest paid. I don't know them in order.
So, so, so the point is that you're concerned that they classify them, they make away their elected position, so you can make sure that they show up for work?
Not only, not only show...
Because I don't think we have that problem, I've never, I've been, longer than thirty-six ye, eight years. Those people show up, you get six meetings in less than eight times, sir.
When we put out a, for a, let's say, county road superintendent right now, we interview, and we had, you know, we look for certain qualifications, and then we can screen the individuals. Right now, I can run for auditor. Okay? You can run for auditor, but I'm not going to pick on any individual, but I'm going to pick on me. I don't know how to balance a checkbook. But you guys all know me. So I'm, I'm going to be the prom king, you're going to vote me in. I can't balance a damn checkbook. You're going to pay me eighty-five, eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Why? Because, right now, it's assumed that I'm going to run against Mrs. Reed here, and I'm going to, I'm going to beat her. And I'm going to get at least the same salary she's getting. That's the assumption in this county. I don't know where that came from, or how that came about. Century code states, did I hand it out to you guys? It's on there. The minimum requirement that we have to pay is nineteen thousand dollars to the recorder, the treasurer, and the auditor. I think it's twenty-one-five for the sheriff, and about thirty-seven for the state's attorney. So in my opinion, that should be the advertised wage, so to speak. So that when you get someone who wins a popularity vote, Gene wins the popularity vote, instead of paying me eighty thousand dollars because this guy didn't balance the freaking checkbook, you, we can, if we were able to advertise for the job, then we could interview. You can get people with an accounting degree, or such, because right now, Janet doesn't like running for politics. She's not going to run for politics. Damn good bookkeeper. Probably did the books for three counties, and done books for 20 years. But not a politician whatsoever. I'm not going to go out there in the public and have people scrutinize me and run for the vote, but if we were able to appoint, I'm picking on Janet just for the more, I threw her three other plus, sorry. But then you're able to, in essence, the commission could hire you. Now, I was also told by a county resident, so you make the recorder, the treasurer, and the auditor appointed. How does that stop for the, I don't know who would appoint the commission, but as the commission being appointed, state statute, state statute said it has to be voted on. State statute says your treasurer has to be voted. State's attorney, I just read it, yes. That can, by vote of the people, not a resolution of the county commission, by a vote of the people, that can be changed to appointed also. So the only people, or your, a commission of three or five, because it's states in there.
You folks can go and have the legislation change the law with specific qualification for every one of those decisions.
That is correct.
That's right.
Our lawmakers could do that. I've also called a few lawmakers about having language in the century code that says, I guess the commissioner, I can't say Gene Wolf, but I'm going to say, your commissioner, commissioners, and other elected officials have to spend a mandatory or a minimum time at their job. I've talked to a few of them, they said, you will never get that through the state.
No, that's...
Instead of never happen, because, well, there are counties where, they're very small, and a lot of those are shared, and I know this goes all the way back to statehood, when you had the local grocery guy, he was your treasurer, and the butcher was your sheriff, and so, and things just have never gotten changed. Yes?
Back to salaries. You have your manalongs, you have what ours are making. How do others compare with the recent salary survey that you guys have done twice, recently, last, can't prove key years? How is the salary survey with the other counties compared to the manalong that you tried to...
Well, that's, to me, that's... What do you pay your treasurer? They say ninety thousand dollars. Okay? So, is your tre, oh yeah, our treasurer has a four-year county degree, your treasurer. So, and then you go to the next county and ask them, what do you pay your treasurer? Ninety thousand dollars. Do they have any degree in accounting? Or whatever, who are they? Prom queen, and everybody knew them. I even talked to a guy in another county, and he goes, I can't even, I don't even balance the checkbook, that, my wife takes care of that. So, when you, when you want to compare salaries without the counties, let's compare qualifications also. But I don't get that, I don't have that on here. They don't give me that, Nadako doesn't give me that. They don't tell me if it's a four-year degree or...
What's the salary survey saying?
What?
What did the salary survey say?
It didn't say, it didn't have qualif, it didn't have...
But it did have salaries.
Yep, but it didn't have... Here in Adams County, what were their qualifications? Did they have any?
Speed limit wasn't qualification.
But, I will say this, just because you have a four-year degree doesn't mean you're more qualified. I know people who, right out of high school, I know a gal right out of high school, she's a CFO of a, of a business. I don't want to, because then you'll know what I'm talking about. And she did that. So I'm not saying that you have to have those qualifications, but it would give your commission the opportunity. We do it with road superintendent, we can do it with our tax director, we can do it with our clerk of court, we can do it with, well, I don't even know all the positions, I'm going to think about them, but the only ones we can are the recorder, the treasurer, the auditor, and the state's attorney.
And the voters.
And what? The commissioners. Exactly. What state statute says they have to be voted. Your commissioners have to be voted. You can have, I can be the freaking prom king, and I can run and win by popularity, because there are no...
Are the people that come?
Pardon?
Are the people that come? And when we run, we put our qualifications in the paper and tell them why we think we should get the job, I mean...
And that's one of the big problems, is the newspaper doesn't get into depth of the candidates at all. And the other thing is, if the job is getting done, and satisfactory, and doing what the job asks for, it's...
You want to go down this road? You guys want to go down this road?
It's your job.
I, no, I will not go down this road. I'm not going to stand here, because I can start bringing up jerking personalities, personnel, let's talk about vacation, let's talk about sick leave, let's talk about what's on the books. Want to go down that road? No, I'm not going.
I would like to say one thing.
Yes.
I'm pretty sure Carmen, I'm more shit at it than what our committee discussed today when they walked out of our office, so that statement is not true.
Aren't you, weren't you forgetting about the call at the voters' legislature meeting? Who are interested, we can judge you if you're qualified for a job?
That, that's okay. With your treasurer. Does she have work today? She's doing her job. She has work today. I, no, no, you are correct, Kibble Creek, no, that statement is correct, I've asked that. All she has to do is make sure her, her office does what century code says she has to do.
That's right.
Okay?
We have trust in her.
So now you're going to pay her... Okay. She's going to pay her seventy thousand dollars. And you don't know if she has a work today.
Do you know if her has a work today?
No, I do not. I'm answering this question.
Do you know her?
Do I know her?
Yeah.
Yes, I know her.
Do you trust her?
Yes, I trust her. But was she at work today? You voted. I'm not asking about me, I'm asking about you.
You voted her because I trust her.
So you don't care if she's at work or not?
What, who's these voters too?
She gets her work done.
They trust, they trust.
Okay, I'll run for, oh, since we're talking about, I'll run for treasurer next time. And if I win, and if you trust me or not, I don't care, but I'm going to win. I'm not going to show up for work. You're going to pay me seventy thousand bucks, or seventy-five, or eighty, whatever, I don't know her salary, but her, I really don't.
As long as you work it.
Exactly, because I've asked.
I know of an auditor...
I don't, sheriff.
Different, besides Carmen, I, Carmen, you know them. But as long as you get your, your auditor and your helpers, get their work done, I don't think the commissioners have anything to bitch about. I don't know what brought this resolution on, but what I'm picking up now, I think the commissioners are a little, uh, a little bit confused.
Well, that scares the hell out of me, that I think we're getting the power to do it.
No, well, if you did, I'll hold up.
Pardon? You listen.
It would be, um, that would seem for me, to trust you, would you control the territory given your job.
You're right, Frank, especially when you look at the track record of the people they have, and some of them totally unfit for the job. The last two auditors, I mean, the votes were just a rat when they got out of there. And this good auditor, and this good treasurer here cleaned up that mess. It was bad. The last state's attorney that was hired by this man, he left the place, they went, he left the place, he went and beat his wife to death in front of his little children. So it's your responsibility. Commissioners, this is the United States Constitution, okay?
Okay.
Now, we have our, all our families and our members, we have, we have sacrificed for years to solidify and protect the right to vote. We have every right to vote.
That is correct.
Our people in, and this idea that you want to take our vote away so you can just have a vote, is like some fascist pink go-kong.
You, you said it yourself.
Yes, I did.
You vote these five in to trust to run your county.
Yes.
Okay. But it can be difficult to run the county when we have people who don't work with us.
That's right, let's just stop on here then, because they don't do their job, say, unbelievable, unbelievable.
Okay.
Our daughter's worked on the auditor, this means she wasn't going to work, but she might be there four or five hours a night, or...
Thank you.
To work out that...
Possibly, if she worked on it.
Yes, her work is done.
But this is part of what we deal with.
Yeah. Do the work commissioners know that?
They probably work for...
Who are the people on the streets where they work? But she knows that, and the work gets started right there.
No, they don't know it, because I, I come on, that's only the impression, everybody's there, hey, I'm always waiting, I have a job, I'm going to do that all day. I mean, I don't have a job, yes, I do.
Any other questions, or just...
So, Brent, so question going back to, originally this was not a measure you were proposing. Now that a petition has gone out, it's going to go to a vote, right?
Yes.
Okay? If it is voted down, is the only way to change that in the future to vote, or could the commissioners decide, six months down the road, eh, I know the county, everybody's said no, but we're actually going to change it anyway? How does that work?
Yes.
So even, even if the whole county votes no...
I'm answering your question truthfully, yes.
Yes, okay.
So you can do it anyway?
They could do another resolution, so they would have to do another petition.
And I think the question is, would you do that? Would you do that?
Possibly.
Right. And what makes you guys so much smarter and brighter than everybody else in this county, that you can make those decisions, take my vote away, take everybody else's vote away, and you only get to vote? That's communism, sir. That is flat-out communism.
Then why don't you go to the rest of these counties, I guess, you can tell them...
I don't care what them other counties are doing, this is first, we're good, law-abiding, hard-working, patriotic people, and we respect our vote, and we respect the responsibility of the vote.
You voted in five commissioners to run your county, and so what's your...
Absolutely, not with interruption that I've asked the state's attorney to go over and investigate on you people. It's a three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand...
But you are, you are also the spouse of an employee of the county, are you not?
What's that?
You're also the spouse of an employee of the county, right?
I am.
Yes.
What's that got to do with anything? I'm a citizen of the United States, I got a right to speak my piece, I don't speak for her, she don't speak for me.
Well, I'm just pointing that out.
What's that got to do with anything?
That, there are several...
She's been there thirty-eight years, she's, she's well respected.
Hey, anyone else got a question?
I got just a question, but for the people who haven't seen this, you like your appointed sheet, of the three positions, how many that have all three positions going to...
There are eight.
There's eight of them on fifty-three, which means eighty-five percent of our voter does not have appointed, treasurer, treasurer, and recorder. They are like...
And above that, seven of them are home road charter, which is probably not, but that's why...
Well, just, we don't have to be home road chartered to do that. Home road charter gives you some other actions. Travis can speak on home road charter.
Did you guys know that?
Without that...
It's a tax, tax, tax.
Even if we made home road charter, that doesn't change the appointed or the voted. That's, that doesn't matter.
People should know that the passage order, the counties that are the voters, do not have all three positions appointed.
But why doesn't that, why is it such a deal about the auditor, treasurer, recorder? Clerk, we appoint. There are counties that hope they're clerk.
That's not the issue here, the issue is, you guys want to appoint auditor, treasurer, recorder.
Yep.
That's the facts. The facts of the issue is...
And there's, there's counties, there are counties that appoint them.
Yes. I need to say here, once, the vast majority...
It's not a bad thing.
All our counties and counties...
It is a bad thing.
We have a poll, the recording office is busy, just like Duncan said, you have coal, there's mining fire on the land, there's a bunch of transactions. You, you, I don't know how to say it, but I mean, it's, they're elected, and they should be elected. I mean, I believe you guys are trying to take our rights away. See, the people that run for these positions, they feel they are qualified, otherwise they wouldn't run. You wouldn't run for county commissioners if you can't take this...
Oh, why, why I ran for county commission?
Yeah, I do.
I wanted to represent the people, I thought I'd go, if things don't change, I am not going to get appointed.
Oh.
It is unbelievable.
Oh, well.
And not you.
Whose fault was it? You can all, but your workers?
Yeah.
My dad worked thirty-one years as a county commissioner, didn't have this stuff. I ran eight years, I got beaten one single time.
I'm not saying I don't get along with them.
Well, I'd get something that way to me.
Oh.
Something that way to me.
I work, I work with Carmen.
I don't know, work with her.
Work with Don, Don, have I ever come in and, uh, what would we call it, uh, made funny you, Chana?
Ask me. I want documents from your HR.
What's that?
I am your secretary, I want documents from your HR. When she comes into that meeting, I, as your secretary, should also get copies of these, everything that you guys get. But you keep things from me, so it limits my ability to thoroughly be your auditor.
Okay, well...
That's what I'm asking. You're asking me how you treat me, and I'm telling you.
We'll, we'll have that discussion.
So, no, let's have it, no.
What is the real reason here?
The internal, if she has an issue with me,
No, I don't have issue. I'm asking you.
We'll, we'll discuss it.
Since you're bringing it up here, if you allow the, that HR that you guys hired, you give your secretary treasurer your secretary, and that's what I am to this board. I should have all those documents to accurately keep the minutes.
I'm not saying you shouldn't, nor did I tell you not to get to it.
But I have never, not since you hired me.
We will take care of that. I wasn't even aware of that.
So, I think this was set at the beginning, but just to reiterate it. So stipulations of saying like the auditor position. So like, I can't run for sheriff because I'm not in the Northwood Peace House.
No, no, we'll, we'll, just a minute, just a minute.
Yep.
You can run for sheriff.
Yep.
You need to go to the six-week training course and pass it.
Yep.
That's all. That's the only requirement.
Do you have it on before or after?
Nope.
After in six months of... Then six months?
Yes.
Okay. But there's a stipulation, you have to have that, okay? Or you have to get it, you know?
Yes.
So, to put stipulations like that, or is that...
The county can't do that. We have to go for statute.
So the local citizens can't vote a measure in?
I don't think so. I'm not an attorney. I can't answer that and say yes, but I'm gonna guess that we can't. We have to follow statute code. We can't put in requirements.
So then, the, the position, if it is hired, is decided by the county commissioners? So interview process, like normal, anything like that?
Yes.
And then it's controlled by a portfolio similar to like the highway supervisor department? There are one or two people in charge of that position? And I, I guess what I'm getting at here is, in the event of like, say, some position doesn't show up, and everybody in the county knows it, the only way for us to get them out of that position is through a whole recall vote?
Correct, yes.
Versus if you have the documentation, and you go through proper HR and everything, you can say, here's all your write-ups. You know, unfortunately, it's not working out, because we need to find somebody else to do the job. And that's, you know, the question there. But the other side of it is, everybody should work together, but I shouldn't fear going against you because you can fire me. Is, is what I'm getting at. So if I am an elected position, and I butt heads with a few people here, but I'm not doing anything wrong, and obviously, the county doesn't have a problem with the people in the county, because I'm doing my job correctly, but we might not agree on something. The only way versus if, you know what? I just butt heads with you all the time, and you don't like it, and all of a sudden, stuff starts showing up in a portfolio, or I find any little nitpick thing to make you go away. Because you can fire me.
Or, I'm not gonna disagree with what you're saying.
Yep.
Yes, that could happen.
And that's, and that's...
But you have five commissioners. And you would need three of them to... I would need, okay, right now, we have a, we would have a quorum, because we have three. I need Travis and Rick to agree with me if I wanna fire you.
Yep.
But he made a good point there. And, and that is, these elected officials are elected by us for like, over the commissioners. There is so much corruption in politics that they are our oversight to make sure you guys, they may got someone like the last voter, just will fudge the numbers in anywhere, pick them anywhere. And you know that's the truth, sir. And I think this is a vindictive effort by you and Mr. Frank and Mr. Bowman to go after our auditor and our treasurer, and them standing up last budget meeting, slapping your little pieces.
So you ask me...
Not letting you raise our taxes.
About, I'm asking about dollars. We have an appointed county official right now, and I don't know if I wanna ask him if they feel threatened with their job. I don't think she does.
Did Ken Miller?
Pardon?
Did Ken Miller?
I'm hard to hear. Did Ken Miller? Going back, did Ken Miller feel threatened with his job? I'm...
Yeah. I didn't, I know, I know.
Yep, I can't answer any questions that have anything to do with Ken Miller. Because it should be in litigation.
Yeah.
So I can't answer any of them.
Sir? I, I may have missed it, I got here a little late, but if you would appoint these positions, is that a lifetime appointment? It could be. It could be. It's a, tell you, or tell the commission these sides to dismiss them and appoint someone else?
Correct.
But it takes a majority of the commission to do this.
Okay. Yeah, I... We have a clerk of court. I don't think our clerk of court feels threatened in any way she had performed, so... And that person is appointed. We have appointed people and...
You have a problem too. Yeah, yeah. Auditor, that's... What do you have to do, Frank?
What, yes, with our treasurer, right now, we can't do anything.
Well, yeah, who are you to...
elected official? If our treasurer, if the commission, if there's something wrong, we can't do anything as a commission.
Oh, you go check the law. I think they go to the government and tell it's...
Oh, yeah. Good luck doing that.
Yeah.
They will not remove... There's been a case in a state where a sheriff got removed.
Yes, and I know, I know who he was.
What would it take for someone to get removed?
Did he get re-elected?
Huh?
Did he get re-elected?
I remember.
Yeah. And once he got re-elected, he's gone. The governor will not remove him again. But he ran again and got re-elected. So, even though, but it's very, very, I mean, to have... You wanna get me removed, it's gonna be a long road.
Yes.
In fact, my term will probably be gone before you get rid of me. But that's your choice as a voter. Yep. Well, no, it's gonna take, uh, three more years.
You can jump, jump where it needs to be from the council.
But it takes three. It would take three commissioners to terminate anybody. And we still have to have... I'm not looking to just to fire people.
What would it take?
I don't know where you're getting that, where you're getting that. You have the feeling that I want the power to just fire people. That's, that's not the objective.
Your objective. You want the power, so...
I want the commission to be able
To put their track on their necks. Because the commission...
I was told that I don't run the county at a meeting, and I had to say, these five run the county.
So, using a different business, we'll just say a bank. If two people walk into a bank applying for a job, one of them has a four-year degree, and the other one is hometown and knows everybody. And the hometown one gets hired, even though has no qualifications, I'm pretty sure there's legality there of that. What would stop the commission from doing the same thing? So if, if two people apply, and one of them's got a four-year accounting degree, but they go, eh, we just don't like her, that's what, we're gonna vote on the one with none, which doesn't solve the problem. We're still, it, it's not like saying that we're guaranteeing that the more qualified person's gonna get hired than anyone.
No, you're not.
So...
You are right. I've even said it, I, I could run for any other position in four years, and if I win? Yeah?
So what's it take for a recall position to take out, to remove you, say this, for tomorrow?
Ten percent of voting signatures?
I'm not...
I think it's twenty-five, actually, for recall.
Twenty-five percent?
I think it's about nine hundred signatures.
Okay, yeah, you would be nine hundred signatures. And then, now, it could be on the ballot, but if this was after, in fact, you'd have to have special action, which costs money, extra money to do, so... And you'd also have to have somebody run against that person to try to recall. Yep.
If you have a recall...
Bring the papers and you know.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes, Joe.
What does Travis and Frank, what are you guys' thoughts? Everybody's been listening to Gene, have Gene's thoughts?
Yeah. I mean, my, when this was brought forward, I wanted to hear what people had to say. You guys are giving a lot of good input. Since that point, um, the petition was filed to bring this to the voters, I was one of the people that voted to rescind it because it was on to the vote. So it was gonna be heard one way or another, was my estimation of it. So, um, when I voted for this, I was, I was on the fence. Whether this would be something we would do or not. We had to get the public input. So based on public input, that's when I was gonna make my decision. And, um, when, like I said, with the petition being filed, that decision's going to the voter seat one way or another, was my thought. And that's why I voted for the rescinding of the resolution. So...
My, my point was like, uh, when you look at the musical chairs in the commission, the commission, we have five people here on the commission. We have, I've got two years. Gene's got four, and you've got, like, four. You know, we're probably gonna get one or two, we'll get one more for sure, no one yet. I feel like, this is mine, just my personal opinion. I, I think that, that auditor's office, and I, again, I'm not looking, like he said, to fire anybody or remove anybody, or anything. But I, I believe that auditor, treasurer, that's an anchor for a common commission, you know? Because the thing about it is, is like, when you have budgets, I have to learn everything when I come in there. You know, any, any one of the new ones that come in here, we... I'm getting myself into it. Had no idea what I was getting myself into. So now you have to learn all these things, and you need that anchor to, to help guide you in that corner. And that is one of the things, I think, is like, in a four-year, Carmen could be gone? I don't know that. I mean, I'm not saying that. I'm looking on the other side of the thing, too. We're, we're all looking at it as a negative thing, too. But there's, there's an anchor in that corner that's gonna be there for a long time. And guide these commissioners as they come in, teach them how to, you know, these budgets. I've asked Dawn several questions of, how does this work? How does that work? Help me with this. How many times have we, we been over that subject? You know, and it's not that it's, you know, that's kinda how I look at it.
I think you put your finger on a very important point there. You put your arm in and what's going on? Why aren't you learning that before you even run?
I get that, but that's the way you...
That's your responsibility. That's not everybody else's weight to bear.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
That's not, it's not, no, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, yes, yes.
I can't be honest.
It's not my job.
I'm asking.
It is not my job to know Carmen's job.
Are you kidding me?
No, it is not.
Then how...
Let's not have an auditor.
How do you manage her office?
You know, I just, I respect that. I respect my commission, all the, the direction they go. So I'm not, you know, trying to ram something down here. Guys, it's totally, it sounds different, but it was, it's something the commission can do. And we opted to do it. I think it was a unanimous vote.
Court of one.
The Court of one.
I'd like to give you this instructive idea, Gene. Because you just mentioned you talked to some commissioner from wherever on this kind of stuff. Then, don't you think it'd be better if you would be talking to the people out in Big City and Stan? No, no, I mean, I mean, before today. I mean, what I'm getting at, Mackenzie County or Auburn County, you don't care what the commission is doing.
The procedure according to the century code is, we first have to adopt public hearings. So to have, to have this prior to having a resolution, no, it don't work that way. We first have to have the resolution, then we have the public hearings, and then we, we talk to the community and talk to the people.
Well, but since this got... ...in all these other towns and talk to the people all through the whole year. So you, you don't get into this where we have to be pushed into a corner. Well, do we want to, you know, lose our vote or not? I mean, it's just, it's just insane to me that you would take our vote. It just bothers me a lot, I mean. I'm a United States constitutionalist and independent voter, and my family has fought for the right to vote. And we've got people with lines and rows of tombstones of people who have fought us to keep our vote and our right to vote. And you want to take it away so you only get the right to vote. It comes down to that decision for most of us. It does.
That's not it. So, and that, that's the process that we, that's in the century code that we have to, to follow. Because I don't, as a single commissioner, I don't know if I could have necessarily been a... I could probably have just a public informational meeting, but then no other commissioner could even show up. Because then it'd be considered a quorum. So even at this, because it was published that this was going to be a meeting.
Gene, you know you could have a meeting. All we have to do is notify Dan, and then, even that, and then put it on the website.
Right, but if I...
You had meetings where all we've done is text Dan, and you've had a meeting that was performed.
On the, uh, resolution.
I'm just saying, there's no excuse you can't have and talk to the people anytime.
Oh, no, I don't have any public meetings. I'm just trying to say, according to the century code, that's the process. And that's all we were, that was my intention, to follow the process. Which would have been the same thing. We came up here, ought to have, we had this public hearing, we're going to talk to you. In any end, we could have said, no, we're not giving it. Because it's not adopted. It's, first you adopt the resolution, you have your public hearings, and then we vote on it. And we could have voted it out. Could have voted it down. It wasn't voted. It wasn't in for sure. So that's...
Has the century code been updated since? How they went it out?
I don't know. They do make changes, I can see. They got it on there sometimes. I don't know if there's a date on there when they make a change.
Certain, certain part, I mean...
Certainly.
In what you're saying, yes. Because they, they literally, uh, uh, every two years we have the legislature, I mean, that, does everything get changed? No.
But your, but your association of counties.
Your century code, okay, doesn't get changed. But I don't know exactly which, which direction you vote, and look what happened to your road, your road funds. That got changed legislatively. So now we lose, uh...
Farm-to-market.
Which one?
Farm-to-market.
The farm-to-market. And that's why it was in, uh, on the vote of the people to be able to allow the county to mail it onto the road fund.
County road fund.
You guys added ten more mails onto the road fund, and we got rid of the farm-to-market mail.
Well, authorization, not on campus.
If that were in the past, did they vote it, you wouldn't go out on it.
But if your association of counties go up to...
We can really...
Yes, so, yeah.
But you asked...
We added it to the mills.
Century code didn't change.
Like this, uh, resolutions, I mean, for legislature to... Up to on this, uh, meeting day, though, like you were talking about, I know all about that.
The resolution to appoint or vote on...
No, no, just to update the resolution. You kept this resolution written up in probably nineteen nineteen or nineteen twenty. It's close to that one.
This one here?
I don't know.
Still want to hand it out to you?
Yeah.
No, I just wrote that up.
No, no, but I mean, you, you refer back to the resolution of how many meetings you got at, and all that stuff.
Oh, it's not the century code. There's nothing in the century code.
That's going to be... I know what my dad talked about. My grandpa, he was county commissioner also back in the twenties. And he would drive to Stanton, and they had two-day meetings. And then he'd stay overnight in Stanton and then go back. He lived north of Dodge. They only had meetings probably three or four a year. And I know when I was on, well, we had two a month.
Yeah, we still have two a month.
But we don't...
That one, I don't even know on...
But that one way back in Grandpa, when I remember Dad said that he had a car, you know, that lived up north of Dodge, had a car, and they wanted him as county commissioner, and it was three. And at that time, you had to be a landowner to be a county commissioner. You have to...
Well, my, my quarter, he's an old county...
Well, I don't know.
No, I'm...
But you could, a person living in town that just don't have, you, that's a farmer in town. You go back to the old county, the fifty's.
Rural landowners, but then you had, um, technically, he lived east of, uh, west of us, and he moved into town. And then that created quite a stir because he was a landowner, farmer, but he moved to town. So now he's living in town, so then he said, well, he don't live on the farm, but he said, well, I still, I still farm. Well, there was quite a controversy over that. Then he sold the farm.
But I mean, I...
Yes, I follow your...
I don't believe in that stuff, but I mean, this, uh, if you, you come into a meeting and be in there three or four days, or times out of a year, I don't think he would last too long to take the public to boot you out.
Oh, okay, I follow, I follow what you're saying, yeah. But I'm just saying, there, there is, there is nothing in there.
Yeah, he makes a good deal here. We had a example of that, uh, it lasted a lot longer than we paid, as taxpayers, who we paid for a long time with Dad's agency. They didn't show up forever, and we paid for that.
You know, that brings up a good point, you know, when you, Gene, you talk about qualifications, and this person may not be qualified, that person may not be qualified. But how qualified is just finding someone who can fit that job compared to that person coming in and fitting into that job and doing the job, and being a good public servant, very conscientious of their job, very respectful and understanding of what their duties are, and what their, their, uh, the respect they need to be given and showing the public they work with? That is a big part that I don't think you, you really understand, sir.
I think you're elected, you're, you're being a lot more respectful to people than you would be here. Because you work every day.
They hear, they're getting shorter.
And here are checks and balances, so they don't stomp the victory.
Well, yes, you got a question?
Would you list any more pros to switching it?
I, no, I'm a liar.
I mean, you have a lot of cons, why, what could, you know, go wrong and why you want to switch it, but I...
Well, one pro is, let's say if we, uh, if we appoint, and let's, let's say we, we appoint, we, Carmen, I'll call you by the first name, Carmen. She's got better job stability. She knows that in four years, no one's going to run against her. So that, you know, she, she will, she'll stay in the job, rather than, I could be out in four years. To me, that, that is a, uh... Any, any of our appointed people in your county, you have appointed people in this county, they've been there for years. One is one of them. She's appointed. She's been there for years.
No, she was elected.
Well, back then, but today, she's not elected.
I got Paul and Art's agreement.
But today, she's not elected. When that changed, I don't know. So, and you have, uh, many others in, in our county. And your tax director is appointed.
That gets back to the public service end of it. She's also sat on the board of directors for the Association of Counties, the, uh, Clerks Association. And, uh, you know, I mean, it's help bring in and put the system online with the steering committee. You know, that's the public servants where they go off above and beyond just having a job. Why, it's a passion.
To me, that, that's a big pro, job security. Uh, yeah, in the county commission, relieve you of your duties. There's that possibility, yes. But so can the voters in four years. I mean, you're up, your job's up for grab, Barry.
Why, we check the artificial...
Every two years, there's a possibility of different commissioners. We have one that's responsible, and only takes a long period. Do you know, four years, everybody can count for?
And in all the years, has there ever been a race really for an elected position official? But if you're doing your job, and someone runs against you, they're going to pick the guy who's doing the job. So if you're doing, if you're doing a shady job, will people run for the vote? Not as important as hiring?
Actually...
We have, we think here, western county, we're not comparing commissioners, because I think, I don't know if there's still is, I don't think so yet. But they were outvoted because they were not, well, doing...
County is not helping enough. We don't allow them.
Yeah, that's on the...
On this side, yes, I wish you had some support for that.
And I, I don't disagree with what you said. He's right. It could happen.
But the other side of it, to point out, because you guys experienced it firsthand, most people don't run for a position because they're looking for a popularity contest. You know, it's, it's, it is, you're, you're getting it right now, it's not a big, it's not a, it's not a big deal stuff, yeah. You're going to get scrutinized whichever way you go. I mean, that's politics at its nutshell, and that's looked at as a bonus, too, you know? We decided to put that person in there, and they're going to take the flak if you don't like what they're doing.
Well, you're going to vote them out in four years, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but it's, you know, I, I just, my own thought was, that way you could get someone in there, and it could be a career. You don't have to worry about someone voting you out in four years. You know, and then, so it's, longevity in some of these jobs does, you know, like I said, right now, you know, someone can run against Carmen next year. Here's a curve. Although, I come along, and I win, and now she's out, I'm in.
I don't know a jack about being an auditor.
So now you're going to spend another four years training me, and then I'm out.
Yep.
You know, because you run, and then you win.
And I mean, to be fair, we established this earlier, we do the same thing with our county commissioners. You know, we're not, we're not saying, like, we didn't just hire the guy that was on city council for ten years and school board for ten years and worked his way up in the politics. Go, we like this guy because he's going to vote the way we want him to vote, he believes in this, that's why he went and ran for county, and that's why he's getting on the county. And he comes in and goes, I got to learn a bunch of stuff. That's understandable.
Yes, you're...
And everybody's agreed to that, that's how they walked in the door.
But I, if, if, if you're going to, let, let's, let's say you compare me as a commissioner to Dawn as a treasurer, Carmen as an auditor. No, my job should have a greater turnover than those, like, those two jobs. I, 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 I mean, I don't believe in term limits, but if, if I'm in one term or two terms, then you should have someone else in, because I get all the way down, I know he doesn't agree with me over here. But I don't need, should not know the intricacies of her job. I should know some details of her job, but not where every dollar goes and every penny goes. If I want to know that, I ask her, and she tells me. She needs to know that, not me. So it's more important for her than it is for me. So I, I always look as the, as a, dear commissioners, that should have a greater turnover than your other five. I try to separate, because there's five commissioners and there's five others. But your other five, the five commissioners probably should have a, in my opinion, should have a greater turnover.
And history shows that's true.
But it's... And I look at qualifications, I'm taking that one because of what he has, he didn't know my background.
Whatever's printed in the paper. They need to question more about, you know, just an objective discussion about, you know, why they're doing this and how this is going to help or this is going to hurt. We don't have that in our speaker, uh, their big government.
Yes, sir.
I think it was asked over here, but, so there's five commissioners, how hard are you guys look qualified to hire these positions than if you're a public?
We would interview the people who would apply for the job.
So you guys are saying you don't know all the ins and outs of their job. How can you hire somebody if you don't know those details?
No, we would hire someone who, what I'm getting at is, we would have the opportunity to interview people and see what their qualifications would be for the job. As I said, we're not, we, you would necessarily hire someone with a master's degree in accounting. But we would, we would probably still hire Carmen even if a four-year degree person applied. Not saying that wouldn't happen, but I'm saying it would get... How do you know my background? I'm, I'm going to run against Carmen next year. Other than this meeting now, because you formed an opinion, I'm going to run against Carmen next year.
But Carmen's... No, that's okay.
No, no, no.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I sent a letter to every single person in this county, and I told them exactly what my qualifications were. You voted me in, and I was okay if you didn't, but I wasn't going to tell you anything that wasn't the truth. And, and working with everybody is an integral part of this. If we'd be able to work in this county, I am thrilled to work with all the awesome testing.
I'm running, okay, I'm running against her. And you don't know my background at all. She just told you hers, but you don't know mine. Right now, I'll bet you're going to vote for her over me, based on what she told you, but you don't know my background, do you?
But no election, Mike, I think it's possible that you'll find out what your background is.
Well, you can, yes. But I said, right now...
Why can't you guys do?
How many, how many elected officials do you interview when I ran for first county commission?
We used to have four of us. And we, that's what we need to do.
I'm not saying we shouldn't, but, you know, yeah.
Because as far as, as far as you know, it's the way I...
Those who do not know me in there, I could be a convicted felon. It doesn't stop me from running for, for...
It is the voters' responsibility to do their own research.
Yes, it is.
And, and we get that option to do it. And it's the same thing. If there's two people, we get to decide and do, you know, did I just pick them? If I decided to pick them, because I, I know the last name, and they do a horrible job, well, I, I voted for them, it's on me. But again, like we talked about earlier, you guys can interview two people and have it overqualified, but that doesn't guarantee you're actually going to hire the overqualified. You're going to hire whichever one of the three of you want, not you three, three of five.
But, uh, a little bit of the difference is, so you vote me in, and I don't do my job. You can do a recall, you can do, you know, try and get ahold of the governor, but by the time you get that done, who knows? They appoint me, and I'm not doing my job. I'm done. I'm done tomorrow. Don't have to wait till the next election, don't have to wait three years, don't have to wait four years. So when you bring up doing the job, and, you know, interview, you could, we could even interview someone, give them the job. We had a state's attorney, we did that, was here two months.
Eighty days?
Eighty days, and we relieved him of his duties. So, but he was appointed at that time.
Yeah, but you would automatically have been up for election that day.
Yeah.
How, how does it work, like, right now, if, like, she just decided, I'm, I'm done with the job and wanted to walk away, or a life change happened, she wanted to move away? How does that replacement happen?
I, I have vacated my elected position, therefore they do appoint you.
Okay, they do.
Same with the commissioner. The commissioner leaves, they appoint a commissioner to fill the position until it comes up for election.
That's how I got uncommissioned the first time. I filled a vacated spot. Then we would appoint, and then they are an employee of the commission.
Yes, sir.
Which, that's what that state's attorney was. So he had been voted in there, so we were able to, thankfully, that's, uh, worked out.
When I, when I voted for county officials, that I felt that I had to vote for. I didn't think they were doing a good job, but nobody ran against me. So it's not a person who gets in again and again and again.
Funny, here's a...
I don't, I don't want to get into it, but that is one place where I could see where an appointment would be better than an election, because if the commissioners are doing their job, they would seek out somebody that was going to do a better job at that position than the person that just gets reelected, not because of their merits or not because they're doing a good job, but somehow they fell into the job, and nobody runs against them. So they just get reelected year after year after year, not on the merits of what they're doing, but just because they're the only choice they had.
And I think if the community, that's one way where this appointment thing would be better, than if the commissioner could seek out a qualified individual just step in. I, like I say, I'm still on the fence on this matter, but I'm trying to weigh both of the points, and then at one point where I can see that an appointment would be better.
Well, I guess, you know, I was going to say that, oh, spectacle.
So I plan on going to be up for the people. That, that's a real reality much more to me to hit a point where, you know, people are working hard towards a guy, you know, they got a lot of their time.
Anything else? I don't know. I don't know. The thing, the, the, the random thing I'm just going to say to the question, but I'm, I'm, just like John, I'm kind of all sides to this. I understand why to do it the odd. Uh, and if, if I was, and, uh, in finance as an auditor, I would have a hard time running for an auditor position and going, and I'm, like, I'm building a house right now, and then they vote four years from now, I might not have a job. And, and how am I going to make my house loan? I mean, that's, that's obvious, but the, the thing I'm going to say to this is that with what just happened in the road department, this is not exactly the best time this should have happened. Because it's, I saw that, and I see this, and they kind of look like they're going together. I'm not saying they are.
I know.
But it's, it's just kind of a bad coincidence or not, so...
Well, sometimes things have to be done, whether they're popular or not.
Yes, exactly. It doesn't, yes, it doesn't, it doesn't look good with what happened in the road department, and I'm up here trying to convince you guys that...
Oh, I think it looks free.
Well, thank you. But yes, it's a bad, it's a bad coincidence. Well, I thank everybody. You got any?